Our retreat, this is the first retreat we've had in quite a while. And we have, well, we have a new member with us too. Laura is joining us this evening. So we're welcoming her to the board and here at our meetings. Also, we have a guest, I don't know if you'd call him a guest, but Nick Caruso from CAPE has volunteered to come and facilitate the retreat at this time. We don't have a specific agenda as far as I know, but of items that we want to cover, that would be up to the members of the board. And maybe Phil, you'd like to start us off.
Sure, sure. Donna, if you want to click mute, I'm not sure if it's you or if it's, there we go. Are you good?
It might be me. I was trying to, I should be okay now. I just had, Rachel had taken my iPad so I had to find all the pieces to get myself plugged in.
Kids will do that to you. So thanks all for joining tonight. I had asked Nick Caruso, who's a senior staff associate for CAPE, Connecticut Associations of Boards of Ed, to come and just go through, talk to the board, really have an open conversation about board responsibilities. Do, you know, have some sort of professional development training for board members. I think it's important for all of you to be on the same page and hear the same thing. And to be honest with you, to ask him questions, I think that's going to be part of it too. And to be able to just have some dialogue about what he's going to share. And so with that, Nick, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Phil. Is there a way, oh, I think I can share my screen from here, right? Oh, you disabled that.
I will allow it right now. You should be good.
And I just have to make sure it's the right one. I think this should do it. Let's try again. I have to reshare my screen. I apologize for this.
We can see your screen.
Does it say Board of Education roles and responsibilities?
Yes.
Is it moving?
No.
Okay, so you're probably looking at the right one then. Oh, okay, I panicked because I can't see it here. Okay, so before I say anything though, I really like to hear from each and every one of you because like Herb said at the front, it's up to the board. I want to make sure that our time together is valuable. So I'm going to go by order on my screen and ask each of you what you hope to learn tonight or what you hope to get out of this evening. And Michelle, I'm going to start with you because you're on my immediate upper right corner.
Okay, thanks. So I'm Michelle Dusset Cunningham. I've been on the board. This is my third term. So I've been through a number of these roles and responsibilities before, but there may be questions that come up. So I'm happy to have an expert that we can ask our questions of. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Going from experience to brand new, Laura.
That's exactly right. So yeah, so I just was appointed to a vacancy on the board and I'm the one who pretty much, anything you talk about will be valuable for me. So I'll let the folks who have been there kind of guide what they need to get out of it because all of it's new for me.
Okay, great. Herb, anything in particular?
No, I think that you'll probably cover most of the items that I would be interested in. I think probably one thing you should cover would be the, you know, the rules and responsibilities of the board members to participate, ask questions, make sure that fully have a full, all the information that they need to make the proper decisions on the board. And also, once the board has made a decision, then to perhaps support the position of the board, whether it's something that I like or we like or whether we don't like it, but at least support, support the board in public.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Ann.
Hi, this is mine. I'm in my second term right now. I'm really looking forward to a good review of everything now that, now that I've practiced it since I've been to CAPE meeting and other questions should arise.
Great.
So thank you.
You're welcome. Elena?
Well, I told you the truth, I wasn't prepared. It was a particular question I would prepare. If I would know that I had the choice and they could ask, I would ask. But at this point, I would appreciate if you would give us a chance to ask questions as you go.
Yep.
And if something arises, I would appreciate that I can ask.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I want to make this as interactive as possible rather than just a lecture. Nobody enjoys that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Tracy?
Yes, I am just looking forward to a refresher and to learn more because I, the last, let's start again. I'm halfway through my first term, but it's been a while since I've heard some of this stuff. So now that I've been actively in the role, it will make more sense, some of it, to hear it again and learn to improve.
Well, I'm still improving after 36 and a half years. So you have a lot of ground to cover. And Donna, you?
I'm new at this and I don't know if this falls under what you're going to talk about, but I don't know Robert's rules. And I think that that is a challenge for me because I want to do things properly, but I don't necessarily know how to get, you know, if get from point A to point Z in the right way.
Okay, well, we could talk a bit about that. That's a whole other evening in and of itself.
Okay, and if it doesn't apply to tonight, that's, that's fine.
I can always come back and we can focus on meetings in general, which could get into rules, procedures, et cetera. I'm at your disposal. This doesn't, I don't, like I said before, this is my 17th visit to Wellington, although it's been a while since the last trip. So I'm more than happy to be there whenever you need me. In fact, I lived right across the street from Hall School for a couple of years. I lived over at The Village for a couple of years between houses. So I know the area pretty well. I'm glad to pay a visit. Okay, so I'm going to, there's a couple of ways I approach roles and responsibilities. Some of you may have seen this at our big new board member training orientation, but I'm not doing the abbreviated version where I have to blow through a couple hours in a half hour. So I'm going to start a presentation, but it doesn't have to end. I mean, we can, your questions can make this meeting ebb and flow or you need it to go. So it's just a guide. We don't have to follow it, but if we get to the end, you'll have plenty of information to digest. So, okay, so I want to start with a nice, simple question. How many school board members does it take to screw in a light bulb?
Seven?
That's the second best answer.
One?
I would say three.
Well, actually, the answer is none. It's up to the board to let it light. The board doesn't get into the decisions on how to do things. It gets into the decisions on what we want. It's a superintendent's job to decide, are we going to go with incandescent fluorescent, et cetera? And in a small district like yours, it's particularly challenging for him to allocate the responsibility to the appropriate person. In a small district, sometimes a superintendent ends up doing stuff that might be better served if someone else had, was able to do it because he's the CEO, he's the chief executive officer. And if he's spending time screwing in the light bulb, he's not doing his job either. I was in a district not far from you, actually, a couple of years ago, and same workshop, in fact, I had just done this part of the presentation. And we were about another half hour into the meeting and I noticed the superintendent writing feverishly on a legal pad. And I, curiosity got me, the better of me, I said, what are you doing? And she goes, I'm taking the minutes. And I asked, is that something that you would often do? And she goes, oh, I always do it because we don't want to spend the money to have somebody take the minutes. And one of the board members literally stood up and said, she's screwing a light bulb. And I thought that was the best thing that happened that night because she got it. The superintendent was screwing a light bulb. And particularly because when you're having your meeting, you're making decisions. It's, you are, that's when you're really participating in the governance of the Board of Ed, of the school district. And your chief executive officer has to be fully engaged and participating in the meeting. And I don't know if any of you have ever taken minutes at a meeting. I'm the one that's always hiding by the door until someone else is chosen because when you take minutes, you don't participate. You're so focused on writing the words down, trying to make sure you heard what you heard, that you don't focus and you can't really participate. And I don't want my superintendent not participating. I want my superintendent fully engaged. So that's just an example, though, of how if we don't think about what we're doing, we can sometimes not do what's most effective. And it's not wrong, but it's not effective. And in fact, I went back for a follow-up meeting a couple of weeks later. I got there early, which is what I usually do. And I met the superintendent and she was actually in her office typing up the minutes. So here's hours of her time, basically, not being the CEO. And so I would, that's part of your job as a board is to say to the superintendent, you know, here's where we want to go, but what will you need from us to make sure we get there? What's the most effective and efficient way for us to do this work? And then it's your job to evaluate the quality of lighting. Do we, when we set goals, do we have an understanding of what success looks like? Or do we wait, you know, will we put in a new reading program? And I would challenge all of you that when you put in a new reading program, that before you vote yes or no, that you already have a sense of how are we going to know if this is, if this is successful or not? What does success look like? How are we going to know? And how will we get reports back on what we're going to be looking at down the road? And in fact, that very same district, it might have even been that very same night, we got to talking about a program and one of the board members said, you remember that reading program we did about five years ago? And the superintendent says vaguely, and she goes, are we still doing that? Now, again, this is a curriculum that the Board of Education adopted, which is a state law. You have to adopt curriculum. And the superintendent says, well, I'm not sure the principal liked where it was going, so she stopped doing it. And that, as a board member, I, a former board member, my little bell was ringing, but I was glad to see a couple of other board members said, wait a minute, stop. Let's, let's, this may not be the meeting where we talk about it, but we probably should on our next agenda, talk about whether or not we are doing that. If we didn't, so be it. But we, you know, we have a responsibility to make sure that the goals of the district are being met. And I like the idea of the superintendent having some latitude. I would not be offended when a superintendent came back to me and said, sorry, this isn't working. Here's why. We want to modify or adjust. That's, that's good leadership. That's good education. One size doesn't always fit all and one curriculum doesn't always solve the problems we thought it would. We try to match as best we can what's available to what we want to get done. But it's, that's why we have in our meeting time, responses to, or parts of our meetings should be reports on student achievement and how we're doing. So that screen is something I want you to always think about when you're at your board meetings. I want you to think about it all the time as long as you're on the Board of Education. You have, according to the last, the brand new strategic school profile, as a matter of fact, 430 students in your district. And that obviously could vary from day to day. But that's what the state says you've got, 430 children whose entire future depends on the decisions you make. And I don't say that lightly. Their success or failure in school has a direct relationship with their success in life. So the better you do for them, the better they will do in their lives. And I really can't emphasize that enough. I just can't. I would tell you a story about a family member in your, your school, as a matter of fact, and how she had a pretty rough time, but it's a little bit too rough to talk about right now. So I'm going to move on. But it, just to say, the work you do will affect children's lives forever. And when they're adults as much, always think about the smiley faces. Just think about these faces at every meeting, every decision you make. This is why we all do the work we do. One other thing I want you to think about, particularly now, I rediscovered the Eisenhower matrix a couple of years ago. And right now, in particular, this is incredibly important for you to think about. Where are you spending your time as a board? Where is your superintendent spending his time as a superintendent and your staff? The matrix basically is broken up into four sections, whether something is important or unimportant, or whether it's urgent or not urgent. And basically, where the superintendent will probably spend most of his time is in the urgent, important category. That's the stuff that has to be done right away. It's more tactical, it's decisions made on the spot about things that are probably more about procedure than they are about goal. So that is within the superintendent's realm. The board should be thinking more toward the important, not urgent category. And the more time you can spend in that category, the better board you're going to be. Because that's when we're planning, that's thinking strategically, that's looking long-term. Where do we want our kids to be, not what do we need to do today to get through today? Now, the unfortunate part is because of COVID and all that's related to it, we are all spending an awful lot of time in the urgent. In fact, that's really the domain that exists, that we exist for right now. It's very hard to look at long-term planning right now. The question then arises, do we spend time on important, unimportant stuff? Or do we spend it on important stuff? And so you have to, I guess the reason I'm bringing this up in such emphasis is lately, what I've been seeing is board members calling their superintendents. And Phil didn't prompt me with this, by the way. This is from another district that I'm thinking about this. But board members are calling the superintendent saying, I got a pick call from a parent and we got to put their kid here. We got to do this, we got to do that. And in this particular case, the superintendent was getting 30 or 40 emails a day from her nine board members, on top of the emails from the other city council members, the mayor, parents, you know, this was a couple of months ago when we were just starting to figure out distance learning, what we, what we're going to do tomorrow, let alone what we're going to do in a week or a month or next September. So the superintendent was bombarded and couldn't get her work done. So I ask all of you to be thinking about, and your superintendent needs to have conversations with you. You need to know each other's wants, needs, expectations. But think about, is this important right now? It might be that you need to talk to Herb a little bit and say, you know, here's a concern I have. Is this something we should talk about now? Should it go on a future agenda? Is it something maybe that we just have to worry about in September or December or whatever? And, or it might be Phil that says to you, you know what? This is something we can talk about, but I think would be better off pushing this off to after budget next year, March or April or something. So be flexible, be flexible, but try to focus all of your time on stuff that's important. Try to eliminate things that are unimportant or at least prioritize them and understand that the things that are least important are the ones we're going to ignore until we have, we have time for them and that we're going to really focus on what has to be done. Does that make sense to everybody? I, you know, I don't normally go into it so much on this, but right now, things are crazy. The directives that your superintendent, your staff are getting from the State Department change pretty much daily. That 50-page document that came out last week, I bet there'll be 50, a 50-page addendum on that by August 1st and probably a total change by August 25th, after you've spent all summer planning on something. So flexibility is a very important word right now and patience. That's going to be the hard one for all of us because we want, our parents are calling us. They want to know. Our community members are, they want to know. Our bosses want to know, are you coming back from the summer? Are your kids going to go to school so you can come back to work? There's a lot of things at stake here and the answers may not be there. So how do we focus our effort where it's most important and will be most effective? One final question for you before we get into the part I actually want to talk about is quick question, how does a board know if it's doing well or not?
We do our self-assessment?
And find that the, we're getting the results that we wanted and the decisions that we made of what we want for our district.
Right. Other acceptable answers would be, nobody comes to our board meetings because they're not angry about any. But that's the right answer. Brand new board member, you got it right. That's awesome. It's really helpful to do an annual evaluation. We can help you with that. We usually send the forms out ahead of time. They come back to me. We collect them, tabulate them, bring them and just facilitate the conversation. So think about that for the future. Happy to do it. So what I'm going to do is tackle a few things that are common errors. I don't like talking about negatives, but this is a, has come, as time has found that it is a good way of talking about a whole lot of issues very quickly. This presentation originally started 26 years ago when I first started at CAPE and it was mistakes I made as a board member. And when I got a new boss who was an attorney, he said, you can't do that anymore because you can't admit to some of that stuff. True story, true story. So, and again, having done this for so long, there are some common things that happen all the time. I did not create, other than the little smiley face slide, I did not create any of this for tonight. So if I hit any raw nerves, it wasn't deliberate. Hopefully, you don't do any of these things because you're a great board. But let's just talk about some of the things that happen. And if there's a way that we can use this to springboard a conversation, that's fine too. So again, feel free to challenge, question, interrupt, or say, this is not going anywhere. Let's change the subject. I'm open to anything. So let's talk about the first thing that happens. Brand new board members in particular, you are impatient. I want to change things. I want to make things better. I want to be, I want to be a force to reckon with. And particularly if there was a contentious election, at least Laura didn't have that problem this time we were appointed, correct? Okay, okay. So, but that can, after you fought in an election and unfortunately, sometimes they get heated, you then have to figure out how to sit together and work together. And that can sometimes be difficult. But, so we're impatient for a whole lot of reasons. And I can remember, I was that board member on my board. I've had a, my first superintendent used to blanch every time I walked into the room. And it was, I wasn't doing bad things, but I wasn't accepting the status quo perhaps. But because my board and I didn't all get along, it was very political. We'll talk about that later. I did sometimes push buttons to get heard that shouldn't have had to be pushed, but I did and it caused some trouble. But I was very impatient. I didn't think the people I was working with were entirely intelligent. One was a nuclear physicist, one was a law professor, one was a school administrator. They're very smart people. I just didn't think so. I was a plumber, by the way. So anyway, so there's that challenge of, why don't they get it? Why don't they understand what I see? Wanting to learn everything. I wanted, I loved education. I drew to it incredibly. And so I was trying to learn as much as I could right away so I could be effective. And what I have learned and what I've seen over and over again is that it takes a year, it takes a couple of years to really get the job, to really understand it effectively. How can I be an effective board member? And not just come up with great ideas, but not, but not only embrace them myself, but get others to see why I embrace it and to get them to embrace it too. How do we work collaboratively? How do we learn, how do we learn how to play in the sandbox together? It's interesting to note that most people, I'll ask you all in a second, but most people who serve in public office or most people serve on a school board are there for the first time in public office. They have never served in another official capacity before. How many of you, just raise your hand if this is your first time in public service? Even if you've been on the board 20 years, it's still your first time. Most of you. That's not uncommon. And so, and they don't teach real well in school or in college, how to be a good governance person, you know? I was a business owner. I was chosen because I was a quote-unquote leader. And I was used to making decisions by myself. I owned a company. If I needed a truck, I bought a truck. If, if I got a call for a job and it didn't sound right, I could refuse it. I didn't have to answer to anybody. I mentioned before, there were a lot of leaders on our board. And yet, what we had to do when we came together in our meetings was build consensus. We had to agree on things together. And that was really hard for a lot of people. So it takes some time to do that, to understand motivations and stuff. The other thing I'd point out is, and I've heard a couple of board members over the years, talking to a staff member, talking to a parent, you have no idea who you're talking to. I'm a board member. Big deal. You don't win a prize by winning an election. You win a prize by doing the job well. And so it's about what you do, not who you are. So I just point that out. Earn people's trust, earn people's respect by doing the right work and you'll go a long way. Let's talk about behavior for a minute. I'm going to, I'm going to actually throw all these up on here and I'm going to work from the bottom up. So falling asleep during public comment. I don't know, are you reading emails now for public comment? Do people call in? How do you respond to public comment now?
They present on Zoom. Go ahead, Laura.
I was going to say, you mean on Zoom?
Well, that's right. You haven't had meetings the old way yet. So yes.
So I wasn't sure if you meant the switch to Zoom or if you just meant in general nowadays.
Yeah, we, sorry. We usually do not reply to public.
You what?
We just listen. We just listen and we do not reply. Which I think we should start replying.
Not really. And we could talk about that meetings a little bit more. In fact, it'll, I'll keep that in mind as we talk. Board, board comment or public comment is a very important part of what you do, but it's not required. The one thing you need to understand, public comment is not mandated by law. You are required by law to hold your public meeting under public scrutiny. The public must be able to observe you doing the work of the district. It is not required that they participate. That is a privilege that you grant to the public and every board does. I think one, I think it might have been a Board of Selectmen tried a few years ago to ban public comment because they had one person in the community that came every week and lambasted them about something and they got tired of it. So they just stopped public comment and then the ACLU got involved and it got really ugly. Plus that person that started going to the Board of Ed meetings and complaining there. So just shifted the burden. But the public should participate, but understand that the reason you're meeting, the reason you gather in a public meeting is to complete the agenda. Your work at a board meeting is the agenda. That is the outline of what you have to accomplish that night. Public comment is a valuable tool, but it is only a subset of what you're trying to accomplish. What you're trying to accomplish is to make decisions. And so what many boards will do is number one, and all very legitimately, one, two-minute limit, three-minute limit. So we limit the time that people can talk. We can require that things be only on the agenda. So we can only speak to things that are on the agenda. There are, you, the general rule is that we will listen to what you have to say, but then it will either be referred to the superintendent for a later time. Perhaps they will be referred back, you know, well, that's, have you talked to the parent, et cetera? You should really follow the proper protocols. But we don't get into a back and forth because, well, first of all, many times, unfortunately, they're coming there with a personal grievance. My kid, my neighbor, my kid's teacher. Those really shouldn't be discussed by the board at all. Because let's say there's a problem between a child and a teacher that sometime in the future could depend, could require some sort of disciplinary measure. You are the adjudicating board. You are the judicial body that could potentially hear that termination. Now, if they can show that at a board meeting a year before that the parent was complaining to you and that you got and that you got involved in that issue, that you would not be a partial board for that public hearing, that, that special judicial meeting. And that, that could, that could force you to either recuse yourself or look for another alternative. If the entire board is damaged by that information, then it's possible you can't even have a public hearing because you have to be able to walk into a hearing and make a decision based only on evidence presented in that hearing. It's sort of like what you see in court, you know? The jury will disregard that question. Well, they always let, the lawyer always smirks. But the reality is, you are only supposed to make your decisions based on what you hear in your public, in your hearing. And if you, if they, and I've seen that, we had a case where teacher was in a grievance, and instead of describing to the board the grievance, the, the union rep for the teacher said, Mr. so-and-so, isn't it true that on April 3rd, you were in the supermarket, and you told this person that this was the worst teacher your child ever had? And he goes, how'd you hear that? Doesn't matter how I heard it. Is it true? He goes, well, yeah, but how did you hear that? We had this, and this was just a simple grievance. It should have been a 10-minute meeting because she was grieving her evaluation, and that's not even grievable. We should have said, sorry, this is not grievable. Have a good night. But instead, we had to call our attorney. We had to wait for her to drive in from Canton. We had to hold a five-hour hearing to ensure that none of these teachers' rights were disturbed by that comment. In the end, we had to make the same decision because in a grievance, it's whether the contract was violated or not. That doesn't change, no matter how egregious the insult might have been. But the fact is, if, if he had, if he had not opened his mouth, we would not have put the district in jeopardy. And now that's a simple grievance. Imagine if it's a termination. Imagine if it is something to do with a child safety issue, maybe even a special ed case, where you are out there publicly denouncing or commenting on a staff member, a parent, a child. There could be a lot of heck to pay for that. In fact, I believe, and this goes, probably Herb's the only one that may even remember this, but way back when, this was probably 20 years ago, I believe it was Wellington, where the district had an issue with a special needs child. There was a very specific problem, and it needed a special resolution. But the board, without mentioning names, being very careful not to identify the child, but by the fact that they actually talked about that specific problem, made that child identify, identifiable, and caused it trouble for the district. You really have to be very careful. That's why your superintendent always has the district attorney on speed dial. And whenever there's a question that comes up, be extremely careful how you individually react to that. If a parent comes to you with a complaint or a problem, you have to remind them that there's a chain of command. Have you talked to the teacher? You really need to talk to the teacher. You have. Well, then you really need to talk to the principal. That's the principal, that principal supervises that teacher. And then have you talked to the superintendent? But it's never, I'm the board member, I'm gonna fix your problem for you. Because you lose that right to do that as a member of the board. That's one of the few things that you can't do. You know, you don't lose your First Amendment rights as a board member, although there are sometimes repercussions when you say something inappropriate. But you, one of the things you have to be very careful about, and we'll cover this again, is when somebody confronts you with a problem, whether it's a parent, community member, or a teacher. Because sometimes the teachers will try to use you as a conduit to circumvent the superintendent. You have to remember, I'm a governance, I'm a member of a governance board. We govern. We don't solve the problems. That's the superintendent's job.
Herb? Comes to the, we have an agenda, and on the agenda, we have public speaking, public comments.
Yep.
Two places, the beginning of the agenda and at the end of the agenda. And we have, we state exactly what we expect from the members of the public when they give us information, you know, that not to mention students and not to mention staff and things like that, personal things. And we kind of control it. And also, we don't get into a debate generally with them. In other words, they, they make their statement, and we just remind them that if it's something that they won't refer to the superintendent, we will do that, or the board will put it on the agenda at another meeting. But we've been doing that for some time, and I think it has been fairly successful.
Yep. That's the good, that's the best practice, basically. That is the best practice. Now, here's where it gets interesting because the comment at the bottom says, fall asleep during public comment. And I've actually observed that a couple of times. Let me explain why that's a really bad thing. Have any of you ever seen a list of things people are afraid of, you know, snakes, spiders, etc.? Number one is usually public speaking. People are petrified to speak in public. And, you know, that, when you go back to public meetings in a room and two or three people show up and want to speak to you, that's only seven, eight of you, big deal, nine of you, it's, you know, it's not a big deal, but it is to them. They're petrified because that's not, it's not in most people's comfort zone. So if they are there, if they are calling into your meetings now, it's because something is important to them, and they deserve your attention. You don't have to agree with them. It may be something that they come every meeting, every week, and they repeat the same, or every month, and they repeat the same thing every time. I just, here I am to read my speech again. Doesn't matter. They deserve your respect. And I can't think of a worse way of showing disrespect than by actually falling asleep in, in public comment. Or taking the outside, you know, there were a couple of our town council members, they used to crack jokes with each other during meetings. And I remember one woman in the, you know, who was speaking in public comment there, castigated them. I mean, she blasted them, said, you two over there, I see you joking back and forth. Show me some respect. And she was absolutely right. So I would point that out. It, it really makes a difference to the public when they, they really believe you're paying attention, and it just, it's good for them. They're not asking for much. They're just asking for you to listen. Don't, Laura, you have a question?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, I, I have a question.
Okay.
What does MUI stand for?
We're gonna talk about, right now. That's called meeting, meeting under the influence.
Okay, thank you.
And believe it or not, that is something that has happened a few times across the state where people decide to knock back a couple of beers before they come to their meeting, and usually chaos reigns. One board I remember, they all met, there's a little bar across the street where the board met, and they would always meet for a drink before their board meeting. And those were usually pretty cordial, but if a couple of them had more than one, the meetings got pretty contentious. So not a good idea. Come to the meeting clear-headed and ready to do the work. It's just really, really important. Don't insult people. Don't insult board members. Elena?
Yeah, so I didn't mean to interrupt. I do have a question, sorry. About public, about public speaking, I mean, about present to speak. You mentioned earlier that it's not required by state statute.
Correct.
To have it, but somebody, when somebody tried to defeat of it, who came out against it? And what, if it's not required by the state statutes, and that's what I did not understand.
It's just, it is a tradition in Connecticut that goes so deep that, as I said, I'm only aware of one board, one, and it was selectmen, it wasn't a school board, that tried to remove it because people were taking advantage of it. The pressure on them was so great, they had to restore it. But it does, again, it allows you to control it through appropriate rules and regulations. But I, and I would never encourage a board not to do it. I just think that it's, it's, you're a governing board, excuse me, you represent the public. And I mean, within legitimate rules, that's just a way of getting the public to be involved, and I think that's really important. The reason I bring up insulting, I mean, I hope you never have meetings where they get so contentious that you're calling each other names. That can be disconcerting. But on top of that, however, sometimes it's not intentional. If a staff member is presenting to the board, and again, we're in a different time now because everybody's a little one-inch square on the screen. But, you know, principal comes to talk about the fact that we didn't really do so great on the fourth grade reading scores this time, and here's what's going on, and here's what we're gonna do about it. And then you decide to take that person off at the knees during the meeting, you know? I have questions, but I'm asking them in such a demeaning and nasty fashion that I'm losing the effect of getting my questions answered by attacking. Now, your staff are the people that are gonna do the work that you're trying to get done. They represent you. They are doing the best they can, and frankly, your superintendent is not going to put somebody up in front of the board unless they have something important to tell you. It's very important to ask good questions. That is one of your primary roles. Ask good questions. You're trying to make decisions. You need data to make good decisions. So ask good questions. However, the purpose of this is to ask good questions, not to play gotcha, not to insult somebody. And it's just sometimes, like I said, it's not even that you're doing it deliberately. In fact, one night, we were talking, having this conversation, and one board member, an elderly gentleman, is kind of gruff. He was, he was a really nice guy, but he just sort of bent over, well, I've never done that. And the superintendent said, you did it last night. What are you talking about? He says, when the two people came in to talk about our technology plan, you blasted them. He goes, I just asked a couple of questions. He goes, no, you really beat them up. He goes, I didn't mean it, you know? And he didn't. But his staff were so upset that at 7:00 AM the next morning, they were in the superintendent's office saying, what did we do? Oh, my God, we're so sorry. Did we do something wrong? And I've had superintendents say, my administrators refused to present to the Board of Education. I will not put them in front of them because they are professionals and they need to be treated that way. If you have an issue with something a staff member says, you pick up the phone the next day and you call your superintendent and say, I've got an issue. I don't believe they were totally truthful, or I'm not sure we got the whole story, whatever it might be. But work through your superintendent, work through the board chair. But don't go after them in public because you're then demeaning, you're insulting your professional staff in public. Do you televise your meeting? Well, Zoom, it's all televised, I guess, now. But the entire public could see it if they want. And so you are humiliating them in front of their community, their work community, whatever. In particular, your superintendent. He is your chief executive officer. It's his responsibility to ensure the success of your goals, your plans, your policies. He represents you to your staff, to your community, to everybody. He is the face of the district in many ways. The chair, the superintendent are the face of the district. And if board members are either at board meetings, or even, maybe even worse, outside of board meetings, in back rooms, in the public, oh, superintendent doesn't know what he's talking about. Oh, my God, it's horrible. I went, I was asked by the State Department to observe several board meetings by one board where they were thinking about intervening in some way, and every meeting, at least twice, by two different board members, they both, every meeting would say, well, I don't believe anything I hear from the superintendent in a televised board meeting. You are undermining the credibility of not only your superintendent, but of the school district, frankly, the Board of Education, too. I, I hope it gets lighter. This is all heavy stuff, and I, I need to get it out, but hopefully we'll laugh a little more in a minute. But it's stuff I think you need to hear. I hope this is helpful. Back to, don't threaten, don't throw things, don't swear at each other, don't have temper tantrums. It's really about, you are the public face of the governance of your public schools, your public. If they see a chaotic board meeting, if they say, see games being played, if they see partisan bickering, if they see any of that, you lose credibility with your community. Not the Democrats or Republicans, not the parents versus the seniors, you lose the credibility of your entire community. And guess what? Those people vote for budgets. And the worst thing that happens, if they have no confidence in you, they're not gonna have confidence in your budget either. It's, that's a slippery slope all on its own. You need as much confidence in what you're doing if you want to have your community support you. So.
I have a question, Nick.
Please, yes.
So now, you know, with, with moving to Zoom, you know, online meetings, we don't know when those will end. Are there any norms that you think would be important to add to that? I mean, you, you gave kind of bad behavior. What would be the norms that you would see that you think are important for a Zoom meeting? Especially for, you know, an online meeting?
Sure. Well, a couple of things that come to mind, and actually Zoom makes it easier to do that, is, was it Elena that asked about Robert's rules? Or was that Tracy? One of you asked about.
Donna.
So I missed, sorry, Donna. So anyway, Robert's rules works best when everybody agrees to the rules and everybody adheres to them. It gets dicey when somebody decides, I'm gonna ignore the rules right now, and I'm gonna just keep talking, whatever. That's when Herb gets the double salary for being board chair because he's gotta play the skills to make that go away. In Zoom, if somebody starts to get obnoxious or refuses to give up the floor, whatever, no. And it's easier to call on people. I mean, some boards, I know, if I'm not mistaken, I used to go to meeting, but I think with Zoom, you can raise your hand. So you can, if you need to, the chair can even say, I'll recognize whoever's hands up. But they can still call on you. It was, it's much easier to see everybody and to call on them, and so you wait your turn. So that's much easier in terms of Zoom. The other thing I think is that doesn't change, but I think it's one that will help the meeting go smoother, is we stick to the agenda. And in particular, we limit ourselves to, I, I think board members should have a three-minute limit for themselves, too. Because if you notice how sometimes if a community member goes past three minutes, your eyes start to glaze over. Well, what you can't see, and maybe now with Zoom you will, is that your fellow board member's eyes glaze over after about three minutes, too. So I, I, as a board member, always try to make short, succinct comments. I'm voting for this because, I'm voting against this because, or before I can vote, this is a question I need answered. But I would try to keep it as brief and short and keep the moving going. If we go onto a filibuster, it, I think that's magnified in this format. The benefit is, though, that it's easier for the chair to say, enough's enough, you're out of order, click. So those are the things I'd start with. The, the main things don't change. You're a meeting in public. The public is watching you do your work. In some ways, this makes it kind of easier, although as a facilitator, I hate this because I love working with people. I like the interaction. I like to see the body language. I can better see reactions when you're in the same room. It's a challenge when you're looking at faces on the screen, but, and I think that works for people, too. People like to meet. They like to be together and gather. So in the absence of that, we have to all work a little harder. I call Zoom meetings like dog, dog years, Zoom hours, or seven hours of Zoom is the equivalent of one hour of regular meeting. Because it's exhausting, you know? When we're done here around 8:00, 8:30, whatever time we finish, we'll all be exhausted. I know I will be. At least I don't have to drive home. That's, I guess, one advantage.
So I have one thing to add on to that. And, and this may be something that the board decided when they went to Zoom meetings, but I'm, I'm assuming that one of those norms is to have your camera on. Is, I mean, was that something discussed? Or, I mean, it seems to me like that should be something, like you just talked about body language and facial expressions. So anyway, what's kind of your take on?
I think it's good practice. I don't know how you can mandate it. I mean, I've still, I mean, I've done a number of these meetings now, and in a couple cases, board members had to call in rather than, you know, go in through a computer or an iPad or something, so they, all we had was a voice. And you're always allowed to just, even in a, in a in-person meeting, you're allowed to call in, you know, if it's an emergency, you're out of town or whatever. So you can still make a phone call, be a phone call participant. The law only says that everyone must be heard. So in a Zoom meeting, the fact that you're broadcasting this means you're complying with the law. I think it's a good practice. A couple of times I've seen where people, when they were talking, they would be on, they'd put their camera on, and then when they're just sort of sitting back, maybe having their chicken wings, they shut the camera off for a couple of minutes. But I don't know how you mandate it, but it is a good practice. It's something I think a board could certainly agree to. You know, you might want to think about, let's have some ground rules, or modify our ground rules to incorporate this new technology.
One of the items that I know that Region 19 is doing, and I, and I kind of like it because I, I agree. It's, it's important for you to see each other and. sometimes, and I think this is hard when you have a big audience and you have, you know, 30 people on your screen. Region 19 and, and Herb, you can chime in, I'm not sure if this is part of a conversation or it's just a decision. They only during their meetings, only put on the videos for the Board of Ed. They don't have the public videos up. And so um, that's, it's something that you can consider that, you know, during the board, maybe during public to speak, you want to see a face. You turn those cameras on, but during your actual meeting, you're hosting your agenda, um, it's just the board members.
And, and everyone else is muted. Um, in fact, very few boards are having the public speak, actually speak in the meeting. Most of them, they're requested to send an email in and the email may be read. Um, or chat, and you know, you can ask, make your comment through chat or through email. They'll acknowledge it. Some don't read every one. They acknowledge, we had an email from a parent and, and it'll be shared with the board after. But um, the law doesn't require you to read correspondence, so to speak. Some boards typically do that, but most people, you know, we, in your packet, you'll see some correspondence, but it's acknowledged, but it's not read. They don't have to be read into the minutes, um, but they can be part of the record. So um, if that helps clarify anything, or maybe it makes more questions. Um, so the other thing I want to talk about, just when we talk about uh, people acting out and behavior. Um, I mentioned before, I wasn't necessarily always my favorite, uh, my board's favorite board member. Um, part of the reason for that was because when I first started on a board, it was a very political board. Uh, there were seven board members, there were five of them and there were two of us. And my chair made no bones about, we don't care what you think, we got five votes walking into the meeting. And as a vote, as an elected member of that board, I resented the fact that I was not treated with any respect. Uh, or acknowledgement. It's like, we got the votes, we don't need you. And that, I had a voice. I had things to say, I had an opinion. Um, and I had an obligation to the community to voice it. And so when my chair would say, don't need to hear from you, I'm gonna call on someone else and not even give me the floor. I had to start acting out to get attention. Now, years later, I don't think I would do the things that I did back then. But I think it's important for you as a board, that if somebody comes to your meeting and, and it doesn't have to be by political party. It might just be by this particular issue. But if somebody feels strongly about something and they're in the minority opinion on it. You have an obligation, I think, to give them their opportunity to speak, to, and to, beyond that, to listen to them. To give credit to what they have to say, to acknowledge their concern. If it doesn't fit what the majority of the board want to do, that's, that's democracy. We make decisions with a majority rule. But to acknowledge that until we have the vote, everybody has a say. Everybody is an equal participant, including the vote. How the votes roll out is a whole different thing, but that's where I see the, probably the second biggest reason why people um, uh, act out, that they behave badly, is because they're very frustrated. They have a voice, they have a message, but they're not allowed to say it. So I think it's critical to let people speak, let them have their say. And if we do it all in a, I'll say graceful manner, we all, if we do it in a, in a polite manner with respect. We have to be able to disagree agreeably. Um, that we can sometimes, and, and I, I was on one of those, in one of those meetings where I was one out of seven. I, I was the only one against a particular motion, but my, and I was chair, so it wasn't like, at that point, we had gotten past the politics. I was the board chair. And I said, I really can't support this. And they said, well, why not? So I explained, well, they took my concern and they incorporated it into the motion. It still was something I wasn't comfortable with, but they still made it better because I had a voice. So we have to get back to the idea of collaborative government, the idea of, of cooperation and working together. It's so sad that we watch many elected bodies in this country have lost the ability to work together. Um, it's, I'm right, you're wrong, and we don't get past that. And, and I, I don't see it a lot on boards, but I see it enough that I need to mention it and things like this. So I.
Um, can you talk a little bit about um, the professionalism within the meeting versus professionalism outside of the meeting? One of the things we've had some questions about in the past is if we're part of a deliberative body and I have participated in this deliberation, what rights do I have to speak out against the decision made by that board outside of the meeting? Um, the town meeting or in public or in other ways?
I'm gonna hold your question for a couple of minutes because we're actually gonna talk about that in more detail.
And because you've got a great Darth Vader image up, I don't want to blow up your, your great visual there.
I saw that and I go, that's perfect. I'm always looking for things like this. Okay, so um, I, I would prefer this to be number one in terms of what boards do wrong, but I, unfortunately, those other things are so much more common. But um, this, and this is a relatively recent one. I, I came to this conclusion after working with boards a long time and after being involved in the Lighthouse Project, which was uh, created by the Iowa School Boards Association. Project designed to have boards focus their work on improving student achievement. Get rid of a lot of the other things and really focus, how do we as a Board of Education improve the quality of learning in our district? And I could spend, well, our training goes a year, so I'm not gonna talk about Lighthouse tonight. But um, this is one of the things that I think boards are, boards, not board members, but boards are most. I'm, I'm gonna use the word derelict and that's too strong a word, but in their, in their work. Because if you're not focusing on delivering content, if you're not focusing on teaching and learning, you're talking about the wrong stuff. And yes, you gotta talk about school buses. Yes, you gotta talk about budgets. Yes, you have to talk about books and all the other killer Bs. But the reality is um, what we do, those little smiley faces depend on good instruction, good teaching and learning. And so if we're not talking about that at our board meetings, if we're not focused on that at our board meetings, our meetings are doing the wrong work. Um, there's an adage, you haven't taught it till someone's learned it. Uh, rather than the old style, in fact, that might be our next slide. Yeah, it is. So let's talk about the old rules. And I can remember this when I was in school. Some kids are gonna learn it, some won't. And if they didn't learn it, shame on them. That's the way we used to teach children. We taught it, I taught it to 27 kids. It's not my fault, half of them didn't get it. They're just not capable of learning what I'm teaching. Shame on all of us for letting that happen for so many decades. The reality is that all kids can learn it. And by all, I mean, a huge percentage, 95%, 96% um, can get it. Uh, and if they don't learn it, it's our fault. We didn't teach them right. Some kids may not learn in the traditional model, but they can learn. They might not learn in the traditional calendar, but they can learn. CAPS has an initiative, they've been talking about for a number of years, where they talk about uh, changing education. And one of the most profound things they came out of that was that um, right now, in the way we teach children, the calendar is um, finite and teaching and learning is variable. So we have the same calendar, but at the end of the year, we have a whole panoply of places people are on this, on the spectrum. Well, what we need to do is make the calendar the variable and learning the um, the commonality. So that every kid's gonna learn it, but some might learn it in a year, some might learn it in a month. So we really have to start thinking differently about the way we teach. And that can't happen if boards of education aren't front and center in the conversation. It won't happen on a statewide basis. Um, probably for a long time, but it can happen in Wellington, it can happen in Plainville, it can happen, happen in Killigley, it can happen everywhere. If you push towards that, um, you can make ground on it. And you're in a small district like yours, the idea of individualized instructions is actually a lot more achievable than it is when you've got two or 3,000 kids or 27,000 kids, like some of our bigger communities. Um, you have a greater chance of success uh, to do that where you are. But the focus has to be about learning and that's why we do what we do. So back to your question. And now let's talk about challenging the vote or criticizing the board after a vote. Um, or if you really ticked off and, and I did this myself, I'm gonna pout. I'm really upset, they don't want to hear what I say, so I'm gonna let everybody know how unhappy I am and I'm not gonna say a word. I'm not even gonna vote. Um. This is, it's been something that's been in um, our, the public eye a lot lately. But our form of government is that basically three, three branches of governance. We have legislative, executive and judicial. Um, what role does the Board of Ed have? I'm gonna throw this question out to you. What role does the Board of Ed play?
Legislative.
Uh, yep, through policy, you create the laws. You are the legislative branch. Anybody else have an idea?
Also judicial.
Correct. You do, you play a very important judicial role in a variety of ways. So you could probably guess the fact that I'm not moving on, that I'm waiting for a third answer.
Executive, making decisions.
Yes. While you have a chief executive officer, it's the Board of Education's responsibility to see that things that you passed get done. It may be by providing the resources to the superintendent, it may be by acting as a um, reflecting board for him to bounce things off of you. It may be in a variety of ways, but you are also in many ways the executive branch of government. If the board doesn't support something, it will not take place. Even if you wrote the goals, if you don't provide the resources, if you don't provide the guidance um, and support the staff, it will not happen. So you play all three roles. Now here's back to Michelle's question. Because if I only served one role, I could criticize the other side, other forms of government and it doesn't affect them or me. But I'm all three. So I did have a responsibility to vote for a budget or vote against it, or to vote for a curriculum or vote against it. But my obligation is still to the corporate entity, the Board of Education. So it's not that you don't have an opinion, it's not that you don't sometimes explain the way you voted. Cause I think we all have an obligation to do that. Um, but it doesn't have to be, um, hey, gee, I saw you voted against the budget last night. Yeah, could you believe those bozos did that? You know, here I am, the only one with any sense, trying to bring forward a budget that makes sense to the community and blah, 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 blah. Or, hey, I noticed you voted against the budget last night. Yeah, we disagreed on a couple of things, but in all, it's gonna help kids move forward. Uh, maybe not as much as any of us would like, you know, but we can make it happen. That's the difference, I think, in the way we respond. And though, you know, reporters love that, they love dissension. They will, they will pull it out of you where it doesn't even exist. I mean, they, they're good at it. Um, until they get too good, then they move to another newspaper. And actually nowadays, newspapers aren't hiring many reporters. But the fact is, people will like to play off of your negativity. So you are, and you're also telegraphing a message to your, your fellow members of the board that, you know what? I really don't have any respect for you. Cause when you insult the decision of the board, you are insulting the deciders. And so I think it's critical that we all understand that, you know, um, and I'm making this as a comment, not as a political statement. But uh, a few years ago, we had a, an election that was pretty close. The day after the election, half the people didn't give up and move out of the country. We had a president. Um, whatever way you voted, we have a president. Um, and that's always been that way. We've had some very close elections for the last few cycles. Uh, and, and almost anything we do, we don't give up the process just because we weren't happy with the results. It's critical that you always think about that. And not to mention that maybe they didn't agree with me on this, but next week, I'm thinking about bringing that proposal on that new reading program or, or trying to prioritize um, gifted and talented, or really want to revamp something in the music department. I'm gonna need people to support me on that. If I've been bad mouthing other decisions of the board, how, how likely are they to want to work with me on that? So um, I don't wanna belabor it. I, Michelle, I don't know if I've answered your question enough, but um, or raised more questions?
Go, and if I, if it comes up again, I'll, I'll ask it in a different way.
Okay, well, this is the place to ask it in a different way, if you'd like.
I guess the question is uh, balance of one's First Amendment rights and, you know, right to free speech versus their responsibility back to the corporate entity of the Board of Education. And I think that there's a balance there because we all believe that we have our, our First Amendment rights and they are not taken away by our participation. But there's a, there's a norm about supporting the work that we do. We have our chance to have our say because we're on this board. And that should be enough. We should allow other people to have their opinion. So there's a balance there that I don't think that um, you touched on in terms of the First Amendment fees.
Well, you know, first of all, before we're allowed to sit at our first board meeting, we have to swear an oath. And within that oath, we are acknowledging our responsibility to the board. And our, our um, promise that we will do the work that we are required to do, that we're supposed to do, that we will honor the compact that we've signed in a sense by, by agreeing to be on the board and getting elected. So we are making a commitment to doing the work of the board when we swear the oath. Um, secondly, I, I mentioned, there's a couple of different presentations I use when I'm talking to boards about roles. The other one is about the state laws that govern uh, education in Connecticut, including the statute that gives the boards their authority. And what the statute that gives you your authority says is you have to create good um, second uh, primary and secondary schools. And that you have to implement the educational interests of the state. You are a state agency. You have agreed to serve on the Board of Education, which includes following the obligations put on you by the state of Connecticut. So that includes providing resources, passing a budget and includes hiring and evaluating a superintendent. There's some things that are codified by law, some are just expectations. I mean, saying you have to provide good schools, well, you could fight all day about what good means. But there's another 40 pages of statutes that describe what good means in many ways. So uh, maybe next time we'll go through that one and just have some fun with that. That's a little less tedious of this, it's less, it's more fun. Um, if talking about state laws can be fun. So um, I, there's that. The other thing is that while there's a law that says you can say, within reason, you can say whatever you want, and that's not actually true. Uh, you can't slander people, you can't yell fire at a crowded theater. Um, you, it, what the law does not say though, is that there are never consequences for saying something. So that, yes, I can say whatever I want, I can use words that I would personally never use. Um, there are repercussions to that, that we have to understand. And when I, for example, if you, this actually happened. The superintendent brought a board in together, an executive session, and described that one of their high school teachers had been accused of something really, really, really inappropriate. The superintendent probably shared a little too much with the board about what that behavior was. The, the board member was outraged by it. I, I'm sure I would be too, we would all be outraged by it. But he then went to the PTO meeting the next night where that teacher was in, in that school, well, until they suspended him pending the investigation. Um, but he told everybody in the PTO meeting what, what happened. Now that did a bunch of different things. One, um, he is in real, he was in real serious legal jeopardy himself. Because he is still the employer and while the person was accused, he wasn't found guilty of anything. There was no, the investigation had not found anything wrong yet. So he was jeopardizing his safety, financially in particular, he could get sued. Um, he was also messing up the superintendent's investigation because a lot of times when somebody's investigating, you learn more about somebody before they know you're learning. And so it's part of the superintendent's job to ask a bunch of questions of the principal or other teachers to get a handle on what's happening before they bring the person and to even decide whether they want to confront them or not. That got all blown out of the water by the fact the person now knew they were under investigation. It really, so he's, in one sense, exercised his, his right to say what he felt like. But it put him and the district in a very bad um, judicial mess. Um, there were serious consequences to that. So there are times when we say something, you could say, I'm gonna vote against the budget. I remember one community where the board chair, in fact, it was the board chair, was really upset. He was a, this was back in the early nineties when taxpayers groups were a big thing. And he was the president, he was also the chair of the board, and he was out on referendum day with a vote no sign. And he got what he wanted, they voted that budget down about five times. He was so proud of himself, but those kids paid that price because of that man's ego, frankly. But those kids paid that price because of that man's ego, frankly. So while you can say what you want, you are part of it. And the other thing you said that's very important, I have a document. Phil, I'll send it to you tomorrow, and you could share it with the board. Just going to make a note. The American Association of Society Executives, which is an association for everybody. These are people who are like leaders of national, in most part, national or statewide organizations. My boss is a member of it. They published an article a couple of years ago that talks about the legal responsibility of serving on a board. You have a duty of care. You have a duty of fiduciary responsibility. So you have obligations that are recognized by law. When I serve on the board, my number one priority has to be to that board. One place that comes up sometimes, if I'm a chairman of the PTA, and I'm a chairman of, or I'm a member of the Board of Ed, and I try to represent both. You can't. You are a board member, you, that's got to be your priority. That's where you're, that's certainly your biggest commitment. So I'm answering your questions with a lot of different answers. It's a complicated question. Have I helped at all, though? Okay. I do want to make sure that you understand, you never stop. And fight doesn't mean fight. It means agree, disagree agreeably. But we push, we push for what we believe in. We do what we need to do until we have the vote. And then, you know what? The board voted. The board voted. It's my job as a member of the board to make sure that it's as successful as it possibly can. So while I'm not happy with everything, I have to be, but that means I also have to be very comfortable that the process was adhered to. If I'm a board member, and I can't ever imagine Herb would do this, but if I was a board member who has refused the floor, so I couldn't explain why I'm voting against something or voting for something, I'm much more likely to go out in the public and complain about it than I am if I was part of the process. I was shown respect, people listened to me dutifully, and then they decided what they believed in, if that makes sense to folks. And if you're in the majority on something, be sensitive to the idea. Oh, I put myself on full screen. I can't see you all anymore. We're not going to worry about that right now. So this is one that it's an interesting mess sometimes. I'm still trying to get my, my comeback. Oh, well, it's gone.
It got blurry. I'm sorry to interrupt.
I, well, I lost Zoom. I'm still here, so I'll just keep going. But for some reason, I've lost my face. Okay. I have this autofocus thing on this camera. It doesn't work all that great. So I apologize. Is the screen blurry too, though?
It looks okay to me.
Okay.
It looks blurry to me.
And I can see you, even if you can't see yourself.
We're all in this brave new world together. It's saying start Zoom. I'm not going to hit that button, I'm afraid what it might do. All right, so let's keep going and see where we go with this thing. Anyway, acting like the Lone Ranger. You know, either trying to act as a spokesman for the board, investigating school activities. Some board members hear a rumor, and they decide they've got to go out and, you know, fix everything. Well, that's not your job. If you're readings, if you're reading into something or hearing things, it's the superintendent's job to investigate and do that. So part of what you've got to do is, I'm sorry, I'm still trying to get my screen back while I'm talking to you. Oh, what's that? All right, forget it. I'm just going to keep going. But it's the superintendent's job to do that. So you need to, you need to understand that and work with that. You don't speak for the board. That's the superintendent's job. Well, actually, the superintendent's job is to sometimes act as spokesperson for the district. It's the board chair's responsibility to serve as spokesperson for the board. And in most cases, board members need to defer to that. The question came up before. What if somebody asked me a question? Well, of course, you can answer it, but in areas where the board has taken a position or made a decision, it's really better to have one person act, or that there's one voice. Let me put it that way instead. What I've seen a couple of boards do very successfully, and I really think it's a great practice, is for, at the end of a vote, so we voted to adopt a new math curriculum. And so before we go to the next item on the agenda, someone on the board or the chair will go, okay, what's our talking points going to be on this? So we've already planned our talking points. We, you know, in this case, we noticed fourth grade math scores in this particular area were not doing as well as needed. We just did a curriculum search, found a good match for that. And so this decision implements that, and we expect to see math scores go up within the next couple of years. So the fact that if anybody in town asks any one of you, why'd you change the math curriculum? They will all get the same answer. And I think that's really important for people to see that. It gives people a chance to, we're focusing our attention on what we're doing, and it's just good practice. So that we either have one voice or one spokesperson. But we don't get in the habit of having other people speak for the board. If you're talking to a teacher or talking to a parent, and they ask you your advice, or if you're writing a letter to the editor, you want to be very clear to say, I'm not speaking to you tonight as a member of the Board of Education. I'm only here as a parent. I'm only here as somebody else. So I think that's really important. And you don't want to be the person that walks into the school and creates havoc. You don't want to be that board member. And that can happen sometimes. So most districts have a process or procedure for, if you want to visit a school, to call the superintendent and just say, look, I want to stop in. I'm not sure what you do in your district. I know years ago, you all had keys to the building, which I'm not sure was the best solution. But, you know, it, yeah. So it's important that you have a protocol and try to stick to it as best as you can. Let me see if I can move through a couple of these quicker, so we can get on to some of the more fun stuff. You know, we talked a little bit about what you can and can't say. You do have to understand that the only authority given to the board is that given to the corporate entity known as the board. Individually, you have no authority to do anything. The only authority comes to you as in a legally, legally noticed and formed meeting with an agenda and making decisions that are within the purview of the board, that you have the authority to make. So you don't have the ability to walk into a school, tell a principal what to do. You don't have the ability to, even walk in, even Herb can't walk into the superintendent's office and say, hey, you better do such and such. I think it's important. Now, he may walk in, because it's a small district, everybody knows, everybody, hey, have you thought about doing this? And maybe he can, maybe he doesn't. But you don't have authority to run the place, so to speak. Micromanaging is the number one complaint. This really is not as much fun when I can't see you. I'm really sorry for that.
Nick, if you want to stop sharing for a minute and then try and reshare, see if that helps.
Yeah, let's try that. Am I, am I not sharing?
No.
No, we're still sharing.
The other thing I was thinking about is leave the meeting and come back, but I, it would only take a second.
Usually you stop sharing at the top of the screen.
Oh, yeah, let me, let me try that. Now, can I share again?
You should be able to.
We can see you. I can't see the else.
Interestingly enough, video thumbnails are minimized, optimized, full screen, video clip, screen sharing. I'm trying to see if I can, participants. I am on full screen. That must be the problem. Oh, share. There you go. Okay, now we got the best of both worlds. Thank you for having patience. By the time I get this all figured out, we're going to be back to in-person meetings, but.
Right.
Okay, so micromanaging, number one complaint, I hear from superintendents. Board members are trying to get into the weeds. They're not focused on policy, not focused on government, governance goals. They are trying to decide whether or not the floors are clean enough, their ceiling tiles aren't leaking. That's not what board members do. If you walk into a building, and I, well, mention it the way I will, because one night, we had a board member who was a principal in another district, and she literally came in with a legal pad, the long one, handwritten, line by line, three pages of stuff that she had taken note of at her visit to the high school that day. There was a bucket of rags next to the janitor's closet. The light bulb was out in front of the principal's office. I mean, really stupid, screwing the light bulb type stuff. Superintendent took the list and then wasn't very diplomatic about how he tossed it into the wastebasket next to his desk. He didn't make a lot of friends. Anyway, I sidetracked. The fact is, that's not how board members do it. Now, I happened to be in the high school that day, and it was dirty. It was a mess. So rather than spend time identifying all the issues, I called the superintendent. In fact, I didn't. I waited till the board meeting that night. I said, what's going on at the high school? It really was kind of messy. And he goes, well, remember last year, we had those budget cuts? So we had to cut three custodians. We had, we have the flu. It was, I think, February at the time. The flu is running rampant, and we were down to one custodian in the high school. And we could either have him in the school all day, try to spot clean wherever he, but instead, we have him in the school all night, cleaning the school top to bottom, so that when school reopens in the morning, it's presentable. He's not there to put out the little spot problems during the day. We're in crisis mode. Now, that's a board problem. Okay, so you need resources to make this work. The reality is, we needed to hire a couple more custodians. We were trying to make do. So we, he then presented us with a plan, and we adopted it, found some money somewhere, and at least got a couple custodians back. But that's the 30,000-foot level. The solution was appropriate resources to do the job, not help them figure out what to do by giving them a big, long list of little things. So the hard part is always determining where's the line between governing and managing. And sometimes it's okay for your superintendent to say, that's really my job, you know? And you need to be able to hear that. Now, if you disagree, you have a conversation with the board chair and say, maybe we should have a conversation at the board level to determine as a board where the line needs to be. But it isn't, I think it should be here, so it's going to be here. The superintendent works for, again, that corporate entity known as the board, not individual board members. You don't have authority over the superintendent. Only decisions by the board have the weight of authority for the superintendent to do things. Now, he's a nice guy, and he wants to get along with everybody, and a lot of times, you're just suggesting things. So sometimes you're going to suggest something, and he's going to do it. But he needs to be able to say, I can't do that right now, you know? Particularly given the crisis that we're all in at the moment. Another thing to think about is, and board members will do this with all the best intentions, actually happened, a board member, just in a board meeting off the cuff, said, I wish we had a report on every one of our high school seniors, five years out, to see what happened to them. Did they go to college? Did they graduate college? Did they go into the military? Were they successful? Did they get a job? That would be great data. But he just said it sort of off the cuff, but the superintendent heard him. And about three months later, he came back with this huge document, not that big, and said, here you go. We did the research for you, and we've tracked down like, I don't know, 500, 600 alumni and figured out what they're doing. And he goes, oh, that's pretty cool. Where'd you get, where'd you come up with that idea? He didn't even remember he'd asked the question. That's not fair. The superintendent, shall I give you permission? If somebody comes to you and says, I'm not looking for, oh, I hit the button and unshared myself. Oh, you know what I did? I killed my PowerPoint. Let's go back to that. I'm sorry, we're, from current slide. Share screen. Can you see it? Do you see the screen, or do you see a guitar?
See the screen.
Okay, so we're back. I'm sorry. This is kind of fun, though, in a sick sort of way. So anyway, if you need something and it's not readily available, you're just a member of the public. Now, if it's FOY-able, I hope you don't have to go through that process to get it. He's just going to give it to you. But if I, if I need to ask you to go out and do research, I need to know such and such, or could you go out and survey the teachers about this? Your superintendent has to be able to say, you know what? That's kind of going to take some time and effort and use staff resources. Why don't you talk to Herb? We'll put it on an agenda. You can explain why it's important, and if you can convince the board to vote for it, then it becomes my work. He has to be able to say that to you, and you can't be offended by that. You don't have the ability to just pick up the phone and say, hey, stop what you're doing and do this. It's, there's a process, and you are the governing board, and that's who he works for. So I just say that because I've seen some pretty good horror stories along the way, and they just get ugly sometimes. Don't drop the bomb on the superintendent. Don't, and those could be, you know, I heard something out in the public. It's, I can play gotcha. If I throw this out at the board meeting tonight, nobody's going to know it. I'm going to prove how smart I am over everybody else by surprising the superintendent. But all you basically do is disrupt everything, and it means that we can't finish the work we were trying to do, because now they're going to have to go back and do some more research or whatever. You, the reason we ask questions, the reason we try to learn is to get, make us better informed, to make better decisions. In fact, I have a slide, but I'm going to go back for a second. I'll share that with you in a second. If you have a big question, sometimes you have to ask a difficult question. Sometimes you have to ask an important question. If you know half your community is outraged that you're thinking about doing something, then it's foolish to think we don't have to ask the question. But what we don't do is wait till the board meeting that night and say, hey, what's going on with this? Did we think about this? Rather, you call the superintendent, maybe the board chair, and say, Tuesday night, I'm going to ask this question. A lot of people in the community want to know the board asked it and that it was answered, and I'm giving you three, four, or five days to come up with a good answer, because it's a, it's a good question. It's not a comfortable question, but it's a good question. So if our, the purpose of asking the question is to be better informed, to make good decisions, that's fair. The other thing I would say is that you should not expect a bomb dropped on you as a board. And if I were in person, I'd take a piece of paper and I'd tear it right now and ask you what that was. And one of you would be smart enough to say, that's opening the board packet, because they were always in sealed vanilla envelopes, and we had to break the seal to open it. And the fact that we were at the board meeting doing that at the beginning of the meeting means we didn't read the board packet. You should expect adequate materials at your board meeting. You should expect to be informed prior to the meeting with as much as you can. But then, and you should all get the same information. I know sometimes, I had this call the other day from a superintendent. I have board members who will call and ask questions, and it's obviously a very specific question that really is only something they care about. He says, but it's my practice to always share the response with every board member, so that everyone walks into the room knowing the same information. And again, that's a best practice. That's what superintendents should do.
Nick, the, what's of education around the state on getting their packets and information? Most of them getting it online and on, or do they get a hard copy through the mail? And also, how far in advance would you suggest that board members receive their packets? So that they could look the information over?
Yep.
The other question I have is.
I'm going to start writing these down.
You mentioned dropping information on the superintendent and so forth.
Yep.
Members of the board can still research items on their own, can't they? They don't have to depend on the superintendent for all their information. Although he's, I mean, if something comes up at a board meeting, I mean, he's a logical person that you'll ask. For all their information, although he's, I mean, if something comes up at a board meeting, I mean, he's a logical person that you'll ask in order to get your answers.
I, I, I have a, a mixed response to that, Herb, because I think that as a student, we're all learners. I mean, that's one of the things that I, I have never stopped learning. Thirty-seven years in November involved with school boards and I'm learning something every time, um, I work with the board. So we never stop learning and we learn by reading, by researching, by trying to get more and more information. The question I guess is, are we, do I have an interest in, um, um. Teaching math a certain way, for example. So I read books on it, I learn about it. Or am I trying to circumvent the process by trying to figure out a way of doing something better than we're already doing it? In other words, what's my intent? It's, a lot of the stuff, it's sort of like anything, what's the intent? If you're interested in a, a topic or thinking about, for instance, raising an issue with the board, but before you do, you want to understand better what the problem is. So that we can better have a conversation about it. I think it's great, read, study. I guess I get nervous when I hear the word investigate. That always throws a, a zinger to me because people who do that are typically using that word because they're trying to enhance the idea that they don't necessarily trust what they're getting. And that's a broad generality. I don't mean to do that, but, um, a lot of years of seeing things like this happen. So, yes. But, well, let me, let me re, let me answer that question a different way, because this is something else, Herb. One of the things I think boards spend way too much time talking about at their meetings are solutions. We talk about fixing things, um, ad infinitum, and we have a hard time agreeing on how to fix something. And the reason that happens is because we spend very little time trying to identify what we're trying to fix. We don't talk about the problem. We talk about the solution before we have a consensus on what we're really trying to fix. So if we have seven interpretations of what the problem is, we're going to have seven different interpretations on what the solution is. So we need to spend a little more time really coming to an agreement on, here is the problem. Case in point, district wanted all-day kindergarten. They've tried for five years at that point to have all-day kindergarten, always failed. Mostly because of money. Some people agreed it would be a good thing, but we can't afford it. Others said, let the kids stay home. Lot of different answers, but they could not reach consensus. Five years they did that. So, um, the superintendent was trying to bring a resolution to it. He really felt they needed it. So what he did was, he brought together all their administrators. They had about 27 administrators and they had a retreat themselves. And I facilitated that retreat. And in that retreat, I presented this to them the same way. We're not here to talk about solutions. We're here to identify what the problem is. So what's the problem? Somebody raised their hand, what's the problem? We need all-day kindergarten. All-day kindergarten is a solution. What's the problem? Well, we need time. Time's a solution. What's the problem? We went back and forth for about an hour. And, but in an hour, the entire room agreed that the problem was literacy and numeracy. Children needed better math, reading and writing skills. So then they presented that to the board and said, it's not about all-day kindergarten. It's about literacy and numeracy. By the way, here's what all-day kindergarten could do to improve literacy and numeracy. But even when the board wasn't ready to do that, they were ready to implement other strategies to help literacy and numeracy. So by taking the argument away from all-day kindergarten and putting it on something they all agreed was the issue, literacy and numeracy, they started bringing the kids along. So they were doing what needed to be done instead of, because they focused on what they had to do rather than how they were going to do it, if that makes sense. So that's Herb, I guess, in an answer to, um. Well, I'm, I'm starting to wander here a little bit. It's now, what, 14 dog hours? So anyway, um, you did talk about packets, whether they're done electronically or, or in paper. I'm going to guess probably have to, two-thirds do some sort of electronic, although a lot of times there are still board members that demand on paper. We have several districts that use our online agenda service, our e-meeting product, um, which is all electronic. However, with that, you can still print a paper copy so that you can email it to a board member or they can download it and print it themselves if they want. But it's, it's something that's happening over time. More and more boards are doing that. Some boards have eliminated paper completely. It's available to the public, online, maybe an abridged version without confidential material in it. But, um, many boards have made that jump, many of them. And, uh, oh, and the other question was when? How soon before? I, I think it's fair to expect it at least the Thursday or Friday before, so at least we have the weekend. The earlier the better, so people have time to really read it. But I, you know, the day before is probably not right. I'd say if you have the weekend, it's a good start. Are we good on that? I know we're looking for a lot of questions to get on to this next one, but.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So, um, one of the toughest ones to deal with is, is talking about politics because it, with boards that are really political, they're not going to stop just because I suggest it's a bad idea. And if you're not political, then it's not going to matter and we're wasting our breath. But I will say this and I, and I can say this in, in all true honesty. I've worked with 159 of the 169 boards in the state. I've done 1600 or 1800 work, no, 1600 workshops, I think it is, with boards in the last 27 years. I've worked with political boards a number of times. I have never seen it work out. I have never seen them lead. And, and I don't know how else to express that other than, um, if you are there for those 430 little smiley faces, they don't care. Their parents don't care. I don't know what else I could say about that. I don't know if this is an issue in your district or not, but, um, I leave it open for a second if anybody wants to respond. Otherwise, we'll go on to the next one. I know you're all getting tired, right?
I don't think we're political on all issues. Just on, sure, I think 90% of the time, 95% of the time, we're, we're on target on most of the things that come up before the board. There are some, there is some politics involved in some of the issues that we have.
Okay, well, I give you permission to stop. As I say, it's one of those things, it's hard to, you know, unless people, I've had boards come in and say, we want to stop doing that and we've worked at it. If it's not interfering with your ability to govern, if it's not interfering with your superintendent's ability to do his job. Then we don't need to go any further. But if it does interfere, if some of you feel that, uh, work with your chair. Because Herb, you have, as chair, you can put a stop to some of it perhaps, with the gavel. Uh, if it happens during meetings at least, what happens outside of meetings is another, another story, obviously. So this is the one I was looking for before. I, this quote I pulled out of this book, School Board Leadership in America, which was written in 1958, I believe. I just got it a couple of years ago for three bucks on Amazon and it's awesome. Ed Tuttle, uh, Ed, um, Ed Tuttle was the first executive director of the National School Boards Association way back when. The scary part is that many of the things he talked about in that book are still ongoing issues. So it's kind of fascinating to see things haven't changed as mu, as little, or as much as they might have. But in it, he put a bunch of quotes and this one in particular, I really gravitated toward. I read, I study, I examine, I listen, I reflect, and out of all this, I try to form an idea into which I put as much common sense as I can. We ask good questions. We look at what we can. We read the books. We do the research. We talk to our superintendent. We look at the material he and his staff present to us. And then we try to figure out, how do we make the best sense out of all of this? It's not, it, it's really an organic process. Interesting research on brain development talks about the part of the brain that looks at data is not the part of the brain that makes decisions. So how we, uh, fix that solution is different in many different people. Some people are much more, hey, it feels right, I'm going to do it. They're more intuitive. Others just keep looking for that next set of data. And are never comfortable making decisions. But it's kind of fascinating that, uh, an organization that has to make decisions for a living, um, sometimes has challenges with that. I'll try to breeze through the last few, because I want to get done and still have some time for questions if you want. Don't let people have you do their bidding. Be the ball carrier. You know, people will ask you to do a bunch of things. Sometimes it's a political party. Sometimes it's a friend, a, a parent. It could be anybody, a family member. Hey, I need this, I need that. Sometimes, you know, and that's never right. It's never right. It, there's a process for a reason and board members aren't supposed to fix problems for people. They're supposed to refer them to the appropriate person to fix them. But sometimes it's much more subtle. Sometimes it's not someone asking you for something. It's, hey, I've got something you should know. I had a guy named Bob on my board. He would, he was a, a citizen. His wife worked in the junior high and he would call me all the time. I've got information. Here we go again, same conversation every time. Okay, what is it? Well, I really shouldn't tell you what was told of me in confidence. Okay, then I'll hang up. Well, but it's something you really should know. We'd have the same conversation every time. Tell me or don't tell me. You've got three seconds or I'm hanging up. And then it'd tell me something that was really incendiary. It was meant to get me running off on another mission, another, um, windmill to tilt at. He wanted me to fix a problem that he had heard about from one of his wife's friends. Because our junior high was the hotbed of union, um, um, arguing back then. So we had to, um, take that into consideration. But it was always meant to get me to react and take it away from the process. And I fell for it the first time. Fortunately, I never fell for it again. People will tell you something, but the reality is, and that doesn't matter who it is. It could be a parent. It could be a teacher. It could be a, a member of the community. They want to tell you something and they're going to tell you their truth. They're not necessarily going to share, you know, the lawyers, lawyer term, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. They're going to share their truth. You don't want to make decisions based solely on their truth. It may all be honest. It may not, but it may not be the whole truth. It may not be nothing but the truth, or it may be nothing but the truth. I don't know. But the fact is, you are only hearing one perspective and it's not your place to judge based on one perspective. So in a hearing, again, if they have an issue, they get to present their case. The administration would present their case and then you'd hear witnesses or whatever, and then you can render a decision. But you shouldn't be rendering decisions based only on one person's opinion or interpretation of the truth. So, and you can get caught in that so easily. I grew up, you know, I was on the board in my hometown. Some of these people who are colleagues as teachers and administrators were former teachers and administrators of mine and they played me. They played me like a fiddle the first year or so on the board, till I realized what was going on. And I paid for that in credibility, because I was, yeah, you need something, just complain to Nick, he'll take care of it. I learned my lesson the hard way, unfortunately. So, um, you have to just understand, there are processes in place and your superintendent is responsible for those processes and making sure they exist, making sure they're enforced. It's not your job to circumvent that. He needs to be aware sometimes of things you hear, not with the idea, hey, I've heard this, you better fix it, but something you ought to know. And then he has to make the determination, how far do I investigate it or look into it or whatever? That's the relationship between the board and the superintendent. Sort of, you have to talk about the chain of command, but always listen to your conscience. Is it right? Is it, is it good for those 430 kids that we keep talking about? If somebody does ask you for something, just remember this statement. This problem could end up requiring board action. If I'm involved in it at this level, I'll be unable to act on it as a member of the board, because it could be a violation of due process. You need to go through proper channels. You need to direct them back to the system, to the process and not, and run your superintendent. Don't have your own hidden agenda. Have a global perspective. And most people with a hidden agenda, or sometimes not so hidden agenda, I'm only on the board because I want such and such. They either get it and then they want to go away and they're stuck for another year or two, or they don't get it and they pout for two years until the next election or four years. Most of the people I've seen that do that, either they quit and disgust, or they become really great board members when they start to realize it isn't just about the second grade reading program that I have a problem with. Or, and some of the older kids perhaps, I'm unhappy with the amount of time my kid gets playing on the soccer team. But it's really about the, the whole holistic school district and all the things it encompasses. That's when it really gets good, when you can start thinking that way. Not going to talk about FOI tonight, because that's a whole nother evening. But, um, I do want to caution you against two things that you have direct control over. First one is, um, don't respe, don't repeat things outside of executive session. I probably would repeat that several times if I could, just because it needs, it bears repeating. Executive session, confident, executive session, confidential are important words to remember. Because again, if you divulge information, it could put the district or you in legal jeopardy. If something's shared too soon. Another simple one, if you start talking about, yeah, we're thinking about buying the Miller farm to put a school up, Miller's price may go up. Just, or some speculator may try to buy it first. That actually happened in our town. One of the business owners heard the town was looking at some property to build a new library, so he bought it first. And then they, they knew he was playing games, so they were going to take it by eminent domain. His lawyer started fighting the town. Unfortunately, his lawyer was also the town attorney. So it got real ugly. That was a political appointment, by the way, which goes back to don't make political decisions, but that's a whole nother story. Anyway, um, honor executive session. Do not discuss these matters outside of your meeting. And the other thing that's really important, you cannot discuss a person in executive session unless they are legally noticed that they're going to be discussed. There's a whole lot of rules, but that's the one that boards mess up the most. You cannot talk about someone in executive session if they are not legally noticed first. So, and if you're talking about teacher A, because the superintendent's brought something to your, um, uh, attention, uh, we need to talk about this. Oh yeah, well, I heard teacher B's doing that too. So one of you has to just say, wait, stop, timeout. We can't talk about this person. Teacher A's been noticed, he knows we're talking. Teacher B does not. We cannot do this. You all have an obligation to stop it in its tracks. They do have the right to demand it be in public. That's their choice, not yours. But they have the oblig, you have the obligation to offer it them that, but it's only, only in executive session with their knowledge. Now, um, they can have representation i, if they need to, like if it's a hearing, for example. The other thing is, they are not required to be in there. You can actually ask them to leave. In a hearing format, they may be a place for them to speak, but they are not oblig, that you have no obligation to let them be in executive session. If you don't need them in the room to talk about them, they do not have to be there. The only way they get to hear what's going on is by demanding it be held in public, if that makes sense. So they need to know you're talking about them, but they do not have the right to sit in the room in executive session. You can invite them if you need to, or they can demand it be held in public. And I've actually seen all those scenarios and sometimes they can be pretty embarrassing, so, um, for the, for the staff person in particular. There's lots of resources, by the way. You know, Rebecca, our staff attorney will always answer an F I, FOI question for you. Most of the time, if it's about a meeting procedure, I, I am on the phone a lot helping board members understand how we should do the protocols, do the things to get things done. And worst case scenario, you can call the FOI commission. Tom Hennick, who is their main, um, public affairs person who does most of their training, most of their investigating, is a former school board member. He gets it. He knows the law. You can always call him too. We don't agree on everything, by the way, but, um, he's a good guy and, and could also answer your question. But it's part of your dues. It's part of the service you get from Cabe, so by all means, call us first. In general, the one thing I would just say, as a board member, be very careful. Anything you say can and may end up on the front page of the local newspaper. A videotape could end up on the internet. I was talking to a board member, board chair, uh, they had a very contentious board meeting one night and the, they had a recess. It got so ugly, the chair recessed the meeting till people could calm down. And a reporter came up to the chair, placed his phone down on the table upside down, so the chair couldn't recognize that it was actually on and recording. And started talking to him about how screwed up the meeting was. And the chair was a little more forthright than he should have been and that showed up on, on the, the web that night. So assume everything you say will be heard, read, tweeted, posted, et cetera. It's going to be shared. It's going to be out there. It's going to be shared, it's going to be out there. So the only way you get around that is by not saying it. And I really mean that, that's the one thing I hope you take away from tonight. I hope you get more than that, but that's an important takeaway for tonight. Don't consider, consider the staff the enemy, you know? You'd have a whole lot more money to learn, to help kids learn if we didn't have so many teachers on the payroll. I heard a board member say that, I did. They're not the public, they're just staff, in a public meeting with the staff in the room. Those are the types of things you can't get back once you've lost your credibility with your staff. They make it happen. Good teachers teach well, children learn, that's why we're here. If teachers are disaffected, if they feel they're not supported, if they feel they're disrespected, disliked, they are not going to give their 100% all to you, they're just not. And that's, the best teachers are the ones that give 120%. That's up from 110 with inflation. Another one that you hear way too often is we have way too many administrators. I've worked with administrative teams a few times facilitating their groups. You don't have enough for the work they have to do. And now particularly with all the changes that are going to be happening day to day to day, principals are going to be crazier than ever trying to get all their work done. So, um, respect them, excuse me, support them as much as you can. But you have to have, it's, the, the staff is part of your team and they have to feel that and they have to be part of that. Last one, ignoring policy. Policy is how you govern, that's that legislative branch we talked about before. You expect every person on your staff to adhere to policy. They cannot ignore policy, they cannot circumvent policy, even your superintendent can't just say, I don't agree with the policy, we're not going to do it. He may think that it's the wrong thing to do and then he will come to you and say, we have an issue, the policy says this, I think in this particular case, it's not appropriate. I would like the board to waive the policy for this particular situation. That's fine, that can be done, the board by a vote can waive a policy. I would caution you to do it carefully. And if you have to do it, be very specific as to why you're doing it. Example might be, we have a person who's almost out of sick time, uh, but they've got cancer, but their long-term disability is going to kick in in 30 days. We'd like to extend it outside of the contract for an extra 20 days or something. Or something similar to that, it's a unique situation. We have a teacher who, um, has an opportunity to, to teach in Europe for a month, but that's going to mean a month when we're not going to have them in their class. And that's, our policy says we can't do that, but this is a great experience for the teacher and for us because we get to have everything they bring back. The board might be willing to circumvent the policy for that one issue. But again, say very clearly what the exception is because otherwise someone's going to come back a year or two later and say, you did it for them, you have to do it for me. And it's harder to fight that argument if the conditions aren't specific. So I would say that's something, and if you have a policy that you're doing that regularly too, change the policy. You know, write the policy that you want to do, not the one that's in the book. I think that's, well, we could get into a whole lot of things. The secret of life was actually the thing about discussing the problems and not the solutions. And a much more elaborate way of showing that, but in the interest of time, I'm going to pass on that tonight. Are there other questions? And I, I will always ask this as something to think about as you serve on the board. Think again about those 430 little smiley faces, what legacy do you want to leave? When you're done with your term on the board or your 37 terms on the board in Herb's case, what do you want to be able to say about your service on the board? You know, what did I do? How, how am I going to be remembered? And I think that's just an important way to think about your work on the board. How do I want to be remembered? So now, any questions, concerns, comments, do you disagree with anything?
You've raised, uh, a lot of questions, Nick, and we don't have another hour or two to go here. But I would say as a result of your discussion and everything, and one of the things that comes to mind is to maintain a high standard, what board members should maintain, a high standard of, of ethics and honesty and integrity in all of the professional matters and decisions that they make as a board member. Because everything we do, as you mentioned, affects the education of the students, right? All our decisions should be geared in that direction, is it going to benefit them and support them in their education?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, you're working as hard as any elected officials did work and, um, you're doing it for no pay. I mean, it's, it's remarkable that this system has worked so well for so many years and I think it works well. People have suggested other forms of governing schools for years, but when, and, and there's research to support this, when boards do their job, when the superintendent does his or her job and the staff does their job, it's better, it's greater than the some individual, some of the different parts, that, boards have to lead in order for achievement to be high. You could have the best superintendent in the world, but if you have a bad board, you still may do good, but you can't do as well as you could if the board was doing their work. So I wholeheartedly agree with that.
Thank you. Any other questions out there? Come on now.
I have a question, sorry, I'm not sure where to put my hand to raise it. Um, my question is, you mentioned the FOI rules. Is, is there a, something that you can send to Phil that he can send out to us so that I know what the rules are?
Uh, short answer is, I believe we have a document. Phil, that's at our, in our bookstore, I think it's only a couple of bucks, but best way to get it quickly because we're not really going in the office yet. So if you do it through the bookstore, you'll get it. But we, we have, I believe we have a primer on, um, FOI. But I need to tell you that the, um, the chairman of the FOI commission once spoke at one of our conferences and he called it the Attorney Employment Act. It is, um, a very challenging law, uh, but there are very specific things and if I'm not mistaken, that document does highlight those, the things you really need to know.
Right, if, if there's even a summary, like I don't need to get deep in the weeds, I just want to make sure that I understand enough so that if I'm concerned, I can at least ask a question before I make a mistake.
Sure, and, and I, I do want to remind you that, you know, you can call our attorney, there's no charge for the call, it's part of your dues. You can call Rebecca and say, I'm thinking of this, what do you think? And we would much rather get that call than the one that sometimes happens the next morning when someone says, last night at the meeting, we kind of did this, what do you think? And it's a little too late sometimes. So by all means, we encourage you to call if you have a question or a concern. But yeah, as I say, I'm pretty sure I've seen it, um, in, in the stack of documents. It's a little, just some notes on it, but it'll give you a pretty good idea. I'm going to double check to make it sure it's there, but I'm almost positive.
I just, I'm unmuted, no. I just quickly Googled and just Googling Cabe and FOI, I got a PDF, 37-page PDF, Understanding Connecticut Freedom of Information Act. So it's, it's pretty easy to get.
Yeah. I think Phil's already.
I have three sitting on my desk.
There it is, that's it.
Right. We aim to serve, see, we got it there before you even had to ask.
No, I just need to see people to get it out.
Yeah. Other questions? You know, I, I would offer the opportunity, if you want to get specific about different areas or different topics, we can do this again. Or we could try to do something that's more of a conversation than a presentation. I much prefer those, so, um, I leave it to you to take advantage of however you can. But I'm happy to work with you. Other questions? Did we, we get to the things you hoped we'd get to?
For me, you got, you got to a lot, so it's, it's, it's a lot for me to digest. And, and then I think same as Donna, I'm going to go into that freedom of information. That's something I, yeah, I need to get up on next.
The, the thing to important about, the, the thing that's important to know about FOI is the purpose of the law is to ensure that the business of the public is done in public. And so a lot of the little rules or idiosyncrasies revolve around places where that may not be possible or it may be possible. But it's, you have to notice meetings so people know that you're going to be talking about things. You have to keep minutes, although minutes only have to reflect actual actions of the board, they don't have to be a verbatim transcript of the meeting. You have to, um, you can only conduct business in meetings except for some very specific issues like security, like personnel, like student matters. Again, that's a whole nother evening's workshop, but, um, you know, but the purpose of all of this, and, and we didn't even talk about email or social media tonight because that's a whole nother area where sometimes that gets in the way. Board members that actually have a meeting on Facebook by all, in the same post, all replying to each other, that could be construed as an illegal meeting. So, um, there's a lot of, but understanding the basics would be a good place to start.
Okay, Nick, I guess there are no more questions and, uh, we'll get back to you. And, uh, we certainly want to appreciate your presentation to make some help in discussing some of these critical things.
I look forward to doing it again if you want.
More and more complicated as you go along. And all of the rules and everything is so complicated, it takes, takes time to understand them. And, and as you say, it's a continual process. I mean, I've been in the business for a long time now and there are always new things coming up and it's.
I think you, Herb, I think you've been to every professional development activity we've had in the last 35 years or so. I respect that. Okay, well, then I bid you all a good evening.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, night.
All right, in that case, Herb, if you want to, go ahead.
Is there anything you want to say at this time or?
No, I, hopefully that was, that was, uh, really something just as a snapshot for you is meaningful. It's a lot of information. I think it's good coming from a Cabe person, that's their business, right? And so there's always so many things that we can learn. I, I think that we just have to make, we have to figure out how to keep that ongoing. And I know that, that's something that Donna's pushed me on and I, and I, and my, and my reflection of, I think I need to do a better job of making sure that I'm giving you information that you can review or look at your, on your own, whether it's books or something you can read. But there's a lot and it's, it's a.
I think this was a good start.
Yeah.
And we could utilize Cabe's services down the road, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah. And I think we should, you know, because you pay your dues for it. And that was a, a free workshop tonight. It's something that we could utilize and try and find a way to do it. Even if it's targeted to something you're doing, it might, it's worthwhile. So that's all I had. So in that case, I think we see, well, I don't even know what date it is, it's the 6th. We see, see next Tuesday? Sound good?
Yep, sounds very good. Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, you too.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
And any idea when the information will come out for the next meeting?
Uh, Herb and I are talking tomorrow, so hopefully pretty quickly, um, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, have a good night, I'm going to end this, so it'll stop recording. Good night.